Thank you. We are back from executive session and I need a motion to consider the consent agenda, please. There's only one item on it tonight.
I move that we consider the consent agenda.
I second.
Mr. Gaynor, will you repeat, please, what you just told me about this item?
So, my apologies. I thought that we had some personnel items coming on this meeting as well, so I added one finance item, which is simply moving the funds between two special cost centers for some of the non-public auxiliary funds that needed to be done. So, that's the only item on the consent agenda.
So these dollar amounts were already allocated. You're just moving them from one pot to another?
Correct. The special cost center tracks by year, so...
Oh, right. Twenty-two to twenty-three. Got it.
Absolutely. You got it.
Okay.
I would like to remind that, or remind the community, that we do have to be a fiscal agent for many non-public schools, and in this case, Communitat Saint in Jezu. So there's things that our people do and our accountants do to sort of manage that, which is costly, but it's part of the job. And I just want to make sure everybody understands the fiscal responsibilities of the school district aren't necessarily limited to the public schools.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Wright?
Yeah.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we move on to our work session topic, the Cedar Lee Meadowbrook tax increment financing. And, Mr. Gaynor, I believe you're going to...
Yes.
...give us a little presentation to remind everybody of what a TIF is, because this stuff is not intuitive.
Correct. So, before we get into the actual resolution, as before you tonight, we did want to provide just a couple, as you mentioned, just a couple of high-level types of comments about TIFs in general, and then this TIF specifically. Let's see if I can get the screen sharing going.
Just as a reminder, there's no PowerPoint in the board docs, so you'll have to load that if you're going to show a PowerPoint.
Oh, I will. Yep, you got it. All right. So, welcome, everyone. Just, again, wanted to go over a couple of, you know, quick, high-level tax increment financing types of items before we get into the conversation about the specific resolution that's before you tonight. So, what is a TIF? Because we hear this a lot. And actually, I'll remind everyone that we did a slide similar to this in our three things back in June, just to talk about kind of what a TIF is and what it's not. So, you know, a TIF being an economic development tool, it allows local governments, in our case, a city, to assist a private developer to finance development of new improvements by redirecting property taxes to either increase the sources of funds, reduce operating expenses, and/or to pay debt service. So, the one point we really want to make here is that it's not an abatement, and that's one of the things that seems to be confused when people talk about a TIF, because the taxes are still paid in the form of a pilot. It's just that the entities that would otherwise get the property taxes don't. And in this case, it goes for one of those previous purposes in the bullet in front of that. So, again, just wanted to make that point clear, because that's one point of confusion that seems to come up quite a bit, which is people assuming that a TIF is an abatement, when it's really a different economic development tool than that. So, the Cedar Lee Meadowbrook TIF specifically, so we have had conversations with the City of Cleveland Heights for a bit now. The city determined that the Cedar Lee Meadowbrook project doesn't work without financial assistance from the city, and the tax increment financing, or a TIF, was the most appropriate financing tool available. The city did propose a compensation agreement with a developer, which was modeled after the Top of the Hill project, you will remember that, which was recently approved TIF. And then the school district and the city entered into negotiations on a compensation agreement after that. So just to hit a couple of the high points of what are in that, and I know most of this has been out there and in the public, but we just wanted to take an opportunity to mention those points, that we have thirty-three point eight-nine percent of sharing of those payments in lieu of property taxes, and that's compared to the twenty-five percent that was Top of the Hill. Fifty percent sharing of those pilots if this project exceeds the projections that were put forward. There's a hundred percent of any new property tax levies for the schools. Fifty percent sharing of income taxes on the salaries of construction workers. And then we had a lot of conversation about parking accommodations for students and staff in order to accommodate for the fact that the development will be taking some of the surface space that's in that. And that is really it at this point. Just, again, wanted to put some high-level points out there for everyone to understand in terms of TIFs. David Seed is legal counsel for the district. He's been involved in the conversations along the way, so he's present with us tonight, and is available to answer any questions that you have. But out in board docs, and we do have hard copies here, you will see the resolution that has been drafted to approve the tax increment financing arrangement for the Cedar Lee Meadowbrook development. And with that, I'll kind of open it up to any questions or any conversations, or anything anyone wants to say about the topic.
So, protocol, we're talking about TIFs. We're not necessarily talking about the deal right now. We're talking about the resolution.
Well, that is at your pleasure. If you have any generic or general questions about TIFs, you know, we'd be happy to answer those. Or if you want to speak specifically to the compensation agreement, the resolution that are directly related to this matter, you can go there, too.
Molly, is it okay if we just continue the conversation with TIFs just a moment longer or two?
Please do. Yeah.
And David, please, if there's something that needs to be said, if you please. So, TIFs are sort of a necessary evil, but it's not the Cleveland Heights School District TIF. This is the community. This is a community. This is a piece of legislation that gets passed by the city and presented to us. Due to Ohio revised code, a lot of TIFs don't even have to come forward to the school district. They are essentially, like if you wanted a ten-year or fifty percent TIF, for example, that is something that we would never, ever see. What I was going to say in some of my comments earlier, but I'd like to say now, is, you know, TIFs, I have a square word next to the word, but I won't say that because we're in a public setting, but they're a necessary evil to do development. In Ohio, we have shrinking population. If you lived in Denver, you would not see TIFs anywhere because there's lots of growth in those areas, and they don't need to provide TIFs. And the same developers that we, as a community, are trying to entice, I'm sort of speaking on behalf of the city, I don't really mean to, but, I mean, the city is looking at the same developers that develop things in Denver as they develop possibly in Cleveland Heights. You need to have, they need to lower, have less risk in the Cleveland Heights deals versus the deals that you would see in Denver. So that's the whole issue about TIFs. What's upsetting is the way Ohio revised code, the burden falls on the school district. It's the school district that has to pay the price to get the economic development. And you sort of cut your foot off to spite yourself if you make just a bold statement to say, "Oh, well, we don't agree with TIFs." Well, that means you're not going to see any economic development anywhere in Ohio. And that is somewhat difficult for someone like me, as a school board member, to accept. I mean, it's real easy. I think maybe if you're running for school board, and you'd say something like, "Oh, we're never going to approve another TIF in our lives," but that's just unrealistic. So, you know, now we have to deal with this TIF. And I think it's frustrating, because there's many tools that the city could use to get this project done by not approving, not even asking us to approve this deal, but would still have the same ramifications. And there's parts of this deal that I think are very helpful, and I'm starting to talk about the deal, and I probably shouldn't, because we don't have a resolution in front of us. But I guess, bottom line, don't like the idea of a TIF. They're necessary evil, which is why we're here, sort of, I suppose, discussing maybe the next step of this conversation.
Okay. Mr. Gaynor, can you remind us, please, of the thresholds which do not require Board of Education approval?
I'll let David come up for that, but I want to say that...
Oh, Mr. Seed, you are the expert.
He is the expert, but that's ten years, seventy-five.
Yeah. Under Ohio law, the city can proceed with a TIF for up to ten years, or seventy-five percent of the value, leaving the school board with twenty-five percent during the first ten years, and a potential opportunity to share in new payroll taxes. The challenge for developers is that doesn't provide a long enough period of time. A developer would like to have twenty, thirty years, because they can then monetize the tax savings and add that to their capital stack to finance the project, and have some more certainty over a longer period of time, so that the project becomes, they can reduce what's called the internal rate of return, they can increase the internal rate of return and reduce their risk.
So developers are borrowing against the value of these unpaid taxes. Is that correct?
They can do that. That's one common reason a TIF is used, is they'll have their equity that the developer contributes, cash or equity. They'll contribute, they'll get a loan from a bank, but then there's a gap. And Jim is correct. I mean, the construction costs in Cleveland are similar to construction costs in Miami or Denver, but the rents are significantly greater in Denver or Miami than in Cleveland. And so you have a gap created, and the developer can then use the TIF. They can go to Bank of America or Key Bank and obtain additional cash or sources of funds that they can use for the development. That's one source. Or they can simply use the refund by the city of paid property taxes to lower their annual operating expenses. Developers will run a pro forma, and if they can lower their property taxes, it makes the project more worthwhile. So that it can be either our debt-for-debt service or to lower operating expenses.
Thank you. Any other general questions or comments about TIFs? Then I guess I need a motion to consider the resolution before us, so that we can discuss more, in more detail, this specific agreement.
I move that we consider the compensation agreement and related documents for the Cedar Lee Meadowbrook development.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Okay. Now we get into the nitty-gritty. I'm going to ask Mr. Seed to come back, please. Thank you. Can you give us the thumbnail sketch of the financial aspects of this particular compensation agreement?
Okay. First of all, the school district will be receiving just under thirty-four percent of the taxes the school district would receive if the project was not exempt. It's not an abatement, but we call it in the law an exemption. So, for every dollar of taxes the school district could potentially receive, the school district will receive thirty-three point eight percent, just call it thirty-four cents on the dollar. And you can look at that in two ways. One, that the school district is not receiving the full dollar, or if the property remains vacant, or just a parking lot, they won't get the thirty-four cents. It can work in both directions. Second, and that thirty-four percent is based on the property value over the thirty years of whatever is built, of what's being built on the site. So that can fluctuate, just like it can fluctuate with property taxes, depending on the value. We do not know what the value will be going out five years, let alone thirty years, but we estimate, the developer estimates that it will increase over time. Another component of the compensation agreement is that, in the event the school district were to pass an additional new levy in the future, the school district will receive one hundred percent of additional taxes from the new levy. So instead of...
So that will be the tax on top of the current tax?
Current tax. And for one, it was a request of ours that we receive one hundred percent in the event the school district were to request and the residents were to pass another levy. Second, developers simply can't go to a bank or plan on levies that have not been passed. They have to rely upon the current millage rate in place right now. Another component of the compensation agreement is that, in the event the property performs better than expected, and what I mean by that is, the school district and the city were provided pro forma analysis by the developer with projected valuations of what's going to be built. There's no guarantee that this will occur, but in the event it does occur, in the event the property achieves a higher property valuation than what's projected, and that may occur over thirty years, the school board will receive fifty percent of the additional taxes above the projected threshold of value. And actually, the city is going to receive the other fifty percent. So as partners, the city and schools will equally share in the upside of this project, if there's an upside beyond what is, or what was projected by the developer in their analysis.
So it's to everyone's benefit for the property values to exceed what they're expected to be?
Correct. And what we wanted to do was, if we did not make this request, let's just say it has a much higher property value, the developer would receive those additional taxes, or whoever the owner is. The owner could be, this property could change hands multiple times going out thirty years, and it may not be the same developer that's here today. You know, we don't have a crystal ball as to the future. Those are the primary financial components of the deal.
And then there's the income tax paid by the construction workers.
Right. We've also entered into an agreement in this compensation agreement that the city and the schools will share in the construction workers' payroll taxes while the property is being built. The city is not sharing with the school district the income taxes, the ongoing income taxes and the payroll taxes that will be generated, but the one-time infusion of payroll taxes from construction workers will be shared equally between the city and the schools.
Do we know how long the construction is anticipated to take?
Usually that will take, I would say, eighteen months, two years.
A reasonable estimate.
I see the city's economic development director confirming that. I mean, we're seeing from Top of the Hill, the developer has the motivation to move this along as quickly as possible.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I'm going to open this up to my colleagues here.
I have one more question for Mr. Seed.
Okay. Not so fast, Mr. Seed.
And what's the timeframe if this does not come to fruition? I mean, when would they have to come back to us for another request for, you know, I know, like, okay, for instance, University Square, that developer has consistently missed deadlines, and at some point, the deal has to be completely renegotiated.
Right.
So what's the timeframe on this?
What we have negotiated with the city and the developer is that we expect the city, and I think the mayor's communicated, the intent to proceed on November seven to pass the TIF ordinance. And they want to move forward as quickly as possible with this project. But as we've seen with University Square, to look across the street, what we've agreed to is that in the event nothing occurs, let's just say something happens in the next week or two, and this, we're just here, standing here, for, we have an agreement that this agreement you're going to pass tonight will be in effect through December thirty-one of 2023. They would have to come back to us if they wanted to approve the compensation agreement after that date, or in the event there's a substantial change in the project. You know, the developer, after today, changes their mind, or there's a completely new developer with a completely new project. And I think Mr. Gaynor and I were involved with years ago, where that occurred with Cedar Center, where there may have been two or three planned projects over a period of five or ten years. But it provides, it provides some deadline, essentially, that we're not, that the school board is approving the agreement that's been presented to the school board, and gives the city and the developer a year and a quarter to work, to approve the TIF ordinance that they plan to approve in two weeks.
Thank you.
Can you stay there for one second?
Go ahead.
This is, I mean, just to make sure everything is transparent. You do this for a living, for school districts.
Correct.
This is what percent of your business? I mean, working with school districts on these types of transactions and property-related deals for school districts?
I think it's probably ninety-five percent of what I do. Probably ten or twenty percent is property tax, TIFs, abatements, and the remainder are property tax valuation and disputes and exemptions.
Yeah. And you work for Shaker. You do, you have a very, very long list of school districts like ours.
Correct. And I'm currently working on projects in Lakewood, Bainbridge, and Seven Hills.
So when a citizen would reach out to me, for example, and say, "I can negotiate a better deal,"
Well, they...
I think I have my answer. I mean, you've done this on and on and on. You understand the interest, you understand what the developers do. I mean, we're not lawyers. We're elected board members. We're sort of a, you know, our role's sort of the check and balance, okay? So as part of that role, what I'm trying to do right now is just sort of, just bring to the public's eye that you have a seasoned negotiator at the table, working with the city, that understands this, that has done this over and over and over and over again, and has had some very great successes with this district in certain other projects where we've had to negotiate. I just wanted to make sure that that was out there, and people understand.
I appreciate the compliment. Thank you. But I just wanted to say that it's important to remember that, as you started with your initial question and comments, this is, it's challenging in Cleveland to develop properties. You know, the city does not have a lineup, line of developers out the door. And ideally, I'm sure the city would love to have a developer to be, if we were in Denver, as you use as an example, who would buy the garage and buy the property for a lot of money. And we could have a property, projected property valuations that were three times as high, but we don't have that here.
And a long line of people waiting to move in, in Denver.
Correct. Yeah. I mean, what we do have here is, and why Top of the Hill has been built, and this project, is we have a market that has an interest in new apartments. Not many have been built over the last, let's say, fifty, sixty years. We've seen in Cleveland, finally, some, or some significant increase of rents that have attracted developers. Thank you.
David, I just wanted to add one thing. David, how many times a week do you pass Cedar Lee and Meadowbrook in your daily travels?
I pass Top of the Hill twice a day, but Cedar, Meadowbrook, a few times a week.
Because on top of being, this being what he does, and being very accomplished at it, you live in Shaker, so you know this community very, very well. So really, you know, I wish that everybody we dealt with had such a deep understanding of this community, and great admiration for the work that you do.
Right. Thank you very much.
You've earned it. Last question. Just, no, no, no. It just came to me. Roughly, when did negotiations on this project begin?
I would say that probably in April, Brian, and, correct me, April, May is when we received information from the city, and we had a discussion around that timeframe.
Yeah, my notes say mid-May.
Thank you.
So I think we should look in more detail. we should look in more detail at what we're agreeing to, and we can talk about this more. Do we need to read the resolution, Mr. Gainer?
I hope not.
No.
No, okay, thank you. Thank you, phew, okay. So we have, we have two official documents here. There's a compensation agreement, and then there's a side agreement called the School District Additional Parking Agreement, which is a separate object, right, which will require...
Correct. All referenced in your resolution.
Oh, so we only have to do one vote? Okay, thank you. That was going to be my question.
Yeah, your actual, your actual resolution title is "A Resolution Approving Real Property Tax Exemption Under Revised Code Section 570941 in Connection with the Development of Certain Property in Safe Cleveland Heights: Compensation Agreement, School District Additional Parking Agreement and Related Matters." All that, all that is encompassing your resolution.
Well, I'm glad you're writing this stuff and not me. Okay. Now, we know that this particular section of Cleveland Heights has been an eyesore for a long time. I mean, 2012 was the last time there was some official development project, maybe, sorta, that fell apart.
Yeah, and I can tell you, because I was at several of those meetings, and I remember the developer made the comment that it was like a, and I had to look it up, but I remember they said it was "a gaping, a gaping tooth in an otherwise beautiful smile", was the exact quote.
Of Lee Road, okay. And, you know, everyone wants to see new business, new residents, and new economic energy in our town. It benefits everybody, right? I mean, I'm sort of stating the obvious here. But that's part of my job as president, is to state the obvious. So I think that through the negotiations, you know, we're we're very happy to be able to do our part to make this happen, because it will benefit everybody in the community. It will benefit our greater constituency for the school district, you know, not just limited to Cleveland Heights residents, but people in University Heights and South Euclid come to eat in Cleveland Heights and goes to see movies and have friends who live nearby. So, you know, it benefits everyone, and I, I'm again, stating the obvious, that's part of my job. But we are, as a school district, making a financial concession in order to see this happen. And so I want to also state that, because if we're accepting a third of potential tax revenue instead of the whole tax revenue, then that, that is, you know, not a negligible concession. On the other hand, we have gotten through Mr. Seed and Mr. Gainer's help a better financial package than we were first presented, and that's important. I only wish that that whole process had started a lot sooner. And then we wouldn't have a last-minute panic and flurry to try to finish this off by other people's deadlines. Because it is important to go through the process of negotiations. We have to have several volleys back and forth to make sure that we've explored all options and come to an agreement that is the best agreement we can come to. And that's, I think, where we are at this point. We have resolved the issue of losing an awful lot of parking spots, which are used by students and staff and used by community members when they come to special events. That's very important to us as a board, because, well, Friday's football game, for example, last Friday's football game, and this coming football game is going to be massive, right? I mean, our kids are playing, first game of the playoffs, home game. So there's going to be an enormous influx of people coming to Cleveland Heights. They need to park near the stadium so that they can come and watch the game and spend their money afterwards, so...
And the same thing happens when there's a band concert, and when there's a choir concert, or there's a reunion.
Or the musical that's coming up, just plug that.
Some musicals coming up, yeah, or robotics competition, yeah.
And that's very important.
Amen.
You know, we can't have people parking illegally, because there's no place for them to park, because that means that the police department is busy ticketing instead of maintaining safety in the environs of the school. So we have to have legal parking that's convenient and available for the special events, which are not the usual daily influx. And the other thing that is in this agreement is a paragraph on outdoor athletic facilities. The mayor put in writing on Friday afternoon his commitment to waiving other fees the city has historically charged the school district. And so I took that as a reason to put in this agreement the following paragraph, Section 15, Outdoor Athletic Facilities. "From the date of the approval of this agreement, and through the duration of the period, the improvements are subject to exemption from taxation under Revised Code 570941 or otherwise provided by the city. The school district shall not charge the city for use of athletic facilities owned by the school district, and the city shall not charge the school district for use of any athletic facilities owned by the city. The school district shall have priority use of city-owned athletic facilities. This section is not intended to set precedent for future development projects." And this paragraph has been written very carefully to make sure that all of the concerns I have heard are addressed. I think it's important that we say out loud that this matters to us as a school district, because our local tax base has already paid for these athletic facilities. And charging another government entity for use of facilities is akin to charging the taxpayers a second time, because we are both government entities dependent on our residents' taxes. And that's pretty much all I have to say about that. But if anybody else wants to make a comment, please do.
I want to add just a couple things here. I mean, when you look at the cost to operate a pool such as our pool, and letting that be an indoor pool facility that the city could use, I mean, if you look at Shaker, for example. Shaker now is opening up their middle school. They're allowing swimming five nights, five nights during the week, from, I think, 7 to 9, and then throughout Saturday. And the school district is paying for the operations of that pool. The city, I just said the school district, okay? I'm dyslexic, I want to make sure I said the school district is paying for the operation of the pool. But the city is running, the city of Shaker is running the rec program in there. As in, paying for lifeguards, collecting any kind of revenue there would be for a pool pass, which is what was originally envisioned when we built our pool. And I would certainly like to see that happen. You know, Dan, I think you've used the word double taxation before. And I know this was a very, very important issue for you.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, I think that really what you just mentioned, and, you know, I mean, overall, this is you know, this whole deal, I think we're all very excited about. I think that the Cedar Lee Meadowbrook development is exciting. And I think that, you know, we have, over the past few months, ironed out a lot of the details and, you know, with the benefit of David Seed's leadership, you know, I think that the opportunity for us to fix really a broken, what is fundamentally a double tax system on behalf of the taxpayers of Cleveland Heights, University Heights, and South Euclid, it's, it's a, it's a very good opportunity, and it's, it's overdue. We've been, you know, working on this issue for, we've been trying to work on the issue for quite a while. It, the fees basically began about 10 or so years ago when we were in the early phases of an amazing renovation of Cleveland Heights High School. And some of our facilities, as a result of that building project, had to be repurposed for things like, oh, we need to put a big pile of dirt where there was a baseball field and things like that. And the, the new geothermal heating system had to be piped underneath the softball outfield. So our fields were under construction as well. And we turned to our, you know, the excellent facilities that the city has. We improved those facilities at Forest Hill Park. And that's when, to the best of my knowledge, that's when the fees began for the use of those facilities. This has been something that we've heard from taxpayers about for quite a long time. And it just, this gives us an opportunity, now that it's been discussed in the open air, and the mayor's you know, very, very positive eagerness to address the issue with the concern that also this didn't want to, you know, rightly, that this shouldn't be seen as a precedent for bringing issues into economic development, which was a good call, and a concern that we addressed in the language here in Section 15. So, yeah, I think it's win-win, win-win.
So just, just to clarify, so the same compensation agreement that was passed by the Clevelandite City Council that they're going through their various readings right now, we've just added that one paragraph?
That's the only change.
For our approval. The balance of the transaction as negotiated and as presented to us by the city remains the same?
Yes.
Except this is not what we talked about. What we talked about was athletic facilities, and this still contains the word "outdoor" in the title. Should just say athletic facilities.
The text, I think, is...
Yeah, the text was changed, but the title didn't, was not changed, so we'll make that edit.
Okay, because I'm looking at what's in board docs right now.
Okay, so we need to scratch one word. Thank you. I'm glad you caught that.
So it's just changing the underlying outdoor athletic facilities?
Just the title of the paragraph, yeah.
Facilities.
Okay.
I'd really like to talk about the transaction, I mean, in general. And I'm, I am, I, I'm going to vote for this, and I encourage my peers to vote for this. I'm very excited that we have a $50 million investment that's happening across the street from the high school. I am very, very pleased about that. I think when people use the word "TIFs" and they talk about, well, you're losing money, well, you're losing money you don't have yet. And it's very apparent that if this does not get passed, the deal doesn't go through. And we know that there's people out there in the community that don't want this deal to go through for a number of reasons. We saw referendum on the ballot. Well, you call it a park, but in reality, we all know it was a referendum. And it was, boy, they said, yes, no, the tricky language here. I'm going to say it was defeated, which leaves room for the project to happen. And when I look at our citizens, when I look at our commercial areas and the owners of those commercial areas and our businesses, you know, we have seen in other cities where targeted economic investment in one area has a little bit of a snowball effect. I think we're going to see higher densities in this area. And I know Van Aken, as you guys know, I'm pretty close to the folks that's going on in Van Aken, and, and I always hear at the dinner table, it's like, we need more density. We need more density there. And people say, no, there's already, the market hall is already too full. No, it's not too full. You need more density. You need to have more restaurants. You need to have more things. And then when you get more restaurants, you get more apartments. It's sort of like the, like the South Taylor stuff that Mayor Kalil came and presented to us. That was a very, very good move, and it was, it made us feel like we're very much part of that project, and it's excited us. And, you know, I'm grateful for you coming here tonight, and I'm also grateful that you came here with the developers and talked about that project, because that is the kind of thing that we, as a school board, it helps us rationalize this, and helps us be able to go back to our constituents. And keep in mind, I live in Cleveland Heights, I love Cleveland Heights. Jody lives in University Heights, loves University Heights. But when we sit up here, we're not Cleveland Heights, University Heights, we're looking at the district. But long story short, I don't think that this, if, if this TIF doesn't pass, I don't think the deal's going to happen. And I think you're going to see the "we're open for economic development" sign get turned around and say "closed". The city's not going to be able to attract other developers. I have a negative piece, which I'd not like to talk about, but I sort of want to mention it, because I sort of feel like it's a little bit of the elephant in the room. I wish this process happened a little bit differently. I wish that this was brought to our attention a lot sooner. I know that there is a transition in leadership, and a big transition in how the city is being run. But I want to see the, the city succeed. I want to see our mayor succeed. I want to see this project succeed. And I'm going to vote for this. So I just, you know, we're supposed to talk, so I talked.
Thank you, Jim. You've made me think about something very important, and that was density. The future of the planet is really dependent on denser cities and not expanding out into the exurbs forever and ever and ever. That's how we're creating a world that is going to implode or burn up. And so by bringing back apartment living and dense, walkable neighborhoods in existing communities, we are participating in too little, too late attempt to, you know, delay the end of our planet. So I think that's an important aspect to this as well.
I, I think the thing that's really struck me about what Jim pointed out, which has been sort of on my mind as I'm envisioning this incredible new development, which is just, I think, going to be a game changer. I spent a lot of time on Lee Road. And, you know, I lived for a number of years about 10 houses away from Lee Road, and in my twenties, it was, it was a lot of fun. But, you know, this will be the sort of economic shining star of the city of Cleveland Heights. And it will be directly adjacent to the academic shining star of the school district, Heights High. And what an exciting, vibrant community that will really become. And I'm, you know, I, as well, am going to support this current vision, this current wording, you know, because I think it is going to be such an exciting addition. And I think that the new, well, I'm pretty certain that the newly-added language resolving the issues around the use of athletic fields has really tipped the scale and made this something that we can, that we can do, so.
Do you have anything you want to add, Beverly?
No, I, I'm just, I'm glad that we're all in support of this project, because of course, I think it will enhance the community. It's a win-win for the community, our school district, as well. And it's, you know, long overdue. So I support it.
And I will talk about, because I've been in a lot of school board meetings, and back in 2011, when a project was brought before the school board, and it was an 80% TIF over 11 years. And what's frustrating to me is, had that project been done at that time, we would be getting revenue next year from that project. So that's one of the things to keep in mind when we think about, you know, the long term of these projects. And like I said, it was presented as "a gaping tooth in an otherwise beautiful smile", that was how it was worded at the time. I'd like to note that this compensation agreement could have been completed at least six months ago if the city had treated the Board of Education like a true partner and involved us at the beginning, instead of coming to us with a deal that we had to renegotiate in order to make it palatable. in order to make it palatable. I'd like to thank President Molly Lewis, Vice President Beverly Wright, Treasurer and CFO Scott Gainer, Superintendent Liz Kirby, and our attorney David Seed, who everybody met tonight, for all of your hard work, because I think that this deal wouldn't happen if it hadn't been you guys working on this for months. Also, I'd like to thank Cleveland Heights Council President Melody Joy Hart for her leadership in reaching out to discuss the merits of the project with me. And to date, she is the only person from the city, or the administration or council, who has reached out to me to even try and sell me on the project and tell me why it was a good project for the city. So thank you for that, Melody. And I encourage our cities to work with us early and often, whenever they are working on an economic development project, because when we work together, we can create development projects that serve our residents, our schools, and our community, and we can accomplish them in a timely manner, which is in everyone's best interest. Because as, as has been presented tonight, this deal is on the clock, and it could fall through if construction costs continue to rise. And we could have avoided six months of this back and forth if we had worked together sooner.
Mr. Gainer? I think we're ready for you.
It's also worth pointing out that at no point during the negotiations, that were not easy, did the Board of Education go public.
Okay, so we have the resolution before you, which is, "Resolution Approving a Real Property Tax Exemption Under Revised Code Section 570941 in Connection With the Development of Certain Property: Compensation Agreement, School District Additional Parking Agreement, and Related Matters," with change to the title of item number 15 to remove the word "outdoor."
Correct, thank you.
And Dan made that motion, and Jody seconded it.
I think Beverly seconded it, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. Got it. Okay.
Will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, is there any other business before us tonight?
It's a pretty strong, having a unanimous vote is a pretty strong statement from this board. I just want to make that statement.
Absolutely. This is, this is just great. And this is, you know, long overdue. And we have a big football game Friday night at home.
Go Heights.
Go Heights.
Go Heights.
We have a, a big Halloween celebration at Boulevard also on Friday.
Trunk or treat.
So I'm going to be a little bit late to the football game, I'm volunteering at Boulevard first.
Are you doing the trunk or treat?
I believe I am.
Excellent.
And we have a great musical coming up.
Sister Act. Thursday, Friday, Saturday at 7 o'clock, November, I can do this.
Fourth.
Four, five, and six, and then Sunday, the 7th, at 2:00? Is that right?
I don't know the time, but I know...
It's a matinee on Sunday.
My boots on the ground that are, that it's playing in the pit says it's a really good show.
Well, we heard some of the singers the other night at the, at the Candy Crawl, and what a lot of voices, some really good voices, so that's great. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
A motion to adjourn.
I second.
Mr. Gainer?
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.